Anybody, Hilda?
Mayor Ambrosio Hernandez.
He's here, he's just running a little late.
Commissioner Lasar Juajardo.
Present.
Commissioner Mayor Pro Tem Bobby Carrillo.
Here.
Commissioner Ramiro Caballero.
Present.
Commissioner Danielle Chavez.
Here.
Commissioner Ricardo Medina.
Present.
And Commissioner Isa Flores.
Present.
We have a call.
Thank you. Item 1B, Pledge of Allegiance and Invocation by Luis.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Let us pray. Lord, thank you for providing us with another day, another opportunity to fulfill our duties and responsibilities in our lives and in our work. Grant us the ambition to work hard and give us the strength to finish what we have started. May our hands always be prepared to take on new challenges and prioritize the next task at hand. And remind us that the quality of our work is a reflection always of you. Amen.
Amen.
Yeah, we'll go ahead and go to item two. We'll bypass two A. We'll do that one next meeting. Two B, proclamation proclaiming May 4th, 2021 as International Firefighter Day. Guys, come on up, please. Firefighters to the front, please. A little faster, guys, we only got an hour. Y'all can move up. Spread out across the front. Thank you. Chief Perez, front and center, por favor. Turn around the other way, guys. It's not, it's not a firing squad. They want a picture, they're ready for the picture. Okay, chief, I don't know, I can read it or you want to say a couple words prior? I'll go ahead and do the proclamation.
Okay, sir.
Whereas International Firefighters Day is observed each year on May 4th to honor and remember past firefighters who have lost their lives while serving their communities, to express gratitude to those that have served in the line of work and to show support and appreciation for those who presently serve. And whereas regardless of the language a firefighter speaks or the country in which he or she works and resides, all firefighters fight against the same enemy, fire. And whereas firefighters follow a long line of tradition and honor that inspire them to help colleagues, neighbors, and strangers alike. And whereas a moment's notice firefighters are quick to respond to uncertain situations to mitigate danger and combat the threat of destructive fire in order to protect individuals, families, and the economic being of our community. And whereas the demands of firefighters are accompanied by both personnel, personal and physical tolls that all firefighters knowingly accept while risking their lives to protect the lives of others. Now therefore, I, Bobby Carrillo, Mayor Pro Tem of the City of FAR, by the virtue and the authority vested in me and on behalf of the commission, do hereby proclaim the 4th day of May 2021 as International Firefighters Day. It witness whereof I have here unto my hand and cause by the seal of the City of FAR to be affixed on the 3rd day of May 2021, City of FAR, as brother Mayor Ambrosio Hernandez and Hilda Pedraza, City Clerk.
Honorable Mayor and Commissioners, Honorable Mayor Pro Tem and Commissioners, I thank you for this honor. It's rightfully that we honor these men here during this past year of the COVID. They've been front and center, working and providing the best service we can to our citizens. So we thank you for having a day in their honor and appreciate the thanks that the commission has given us.
As for me, I want to thank you all for stepping up to the plate when, when, obviously during the COVID pandemic, that you all stepped to the plate and came to serve the community as you did. I know you guys were very instrumental in the unique situation that Dr. the Mayor, Ambrosio Hernandez and Dr. Caballero took the initiative to start vaccinating the people within our community, the elderly. And you guys stepped right in and took that responsibility. So on, as, on behalf of myself and I'm sure the rest of the commission, we want to thank you guys for doing that.
Thank you, sir.
Anybody else like to say a few words?
Yeah, no, I want to really reiterate what Commissioner Carrillo said, you know. If it wasn't really for the firefighters and that did, stepped up to the plate, I mean, we, people don't realize what a great service was done for the City of FAR. And not only for the City of FAR, I know you guys immunized other farm workers as well, you went to other communities. You went far beyond, you know, what you are normally, you know, trained to do, but you're first responders, you care about healthcare, and you wouldn't be doing the job that you're doing if you didn't have a certain characteristic and personality to, to do what you do. So on behalf of myself and again, all the citizens of FAR, which you did vaccinate, and I did call Danny and I called Lenny and, you know, your, your, your chief, when we visited the adult daycare centers, they, some of them cried, some of them really were, you know, you, you really did a lot for them. For them to have been vaccinated was, took a lot of their anxiety away. And it was really, whether you believe it or not, and I think you do, it was really a big thing. And you helped thousands of people and you can always look back at what, what you did during this pandemic. And you were one of the ones that did quite a bit. And you can always look back and reflect and what a wonderful thing you did. So congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Mark, turn around, come up here and take a picture with the commission. Congratulations, guys, good, good job. Item 2C, proclamation proclaiming May 5th, 2021 as Junior FAR Chamber Champions Day. Everybody FAR Chamber Champions, come on up.
Mayor Pro Tem, Commissioners, we just would like to, first of all, thank you for all the efforts that have been provided for the Greater FAR Chamber of Commerce. My name is Mario Liscano, I am the chairman of the board for the FAR Chamber of Commerce. With me, I have two of our board members, Mr. Alex Rios and Mr. Johnny Rodriguez, joining us with our interim executive director, Ms. Marcela Baiz. Today, we are honoring and, and we thank you for making sure that we have this proclamation for our students, which is our future, our champions, that are helping us by them undertaking this great project. Not only for the schools in, in FAR that will be available for, but anybody that's willing to go ahead and participate. We'd like to thank their principals that are present with us, their deans and teachers that are in charge of it. We'd like for them to be recognized. This program is a part of the Chamber of Commerce where they're actually junior ambassadors, representing not only the City of FAR but also our business community. When they get started at an early age, they understand the importance of how a positive economy will help till we can provide the services that are needed within the city. We thank each and every one of you for your continued support. We thank each and every one of you for entrusting the chamber to continue to pass on that information to our junior ambassadors. And we'd like to thank our schools here in FAR for their efforts and continue to support the Chamber of Commerce. We ask you that you please approve the proclamation today.
Do you want to introduce the kids now or?
Yes, yes, we're going to, well, we'd like to honor them with a certificate, if that's okay, Commissioner?
Okay.
So present with us today, we have six students that participated in the, in the project. And it's Mr. Angel Torres, we also have Deandra Casares, Monserrat Marquez, Daniel Roberto Salinas, Katia Morales Gonzalez, and Diego Rebollo Quiñones. And now. And we're gonna have them say a few words, if that's okay?
Yes, I'll, I'll, yeah, I'll be reading proclamation, okay. Whereas the City of FAR congratulates PSG Southwest Early College High School students for participating in the Greater FAR Chamber of Commerce Junior FAR Chamber Champions Program. And whereas students participated in the FAR social campaign for which they directed and created digital content for local businesses to be used as promotional material. And whereas students gained mentorship and real-life marketing and business experience to be applied in future educational and professional endeavors. And whereas the Greater FAR Chamber of Commerce Junior FAR Chamber Champions Program grants students the opportunity to work directly with businesses and provides a pathway to a permanent job position. Therefore, I, Roberto Bobby Carrillo, Mayor Pro Tem, representing Ambrosio Hernandez, Mayor of the City of FAR, Texas, by the virtue of the authority vested in me and on behalf of the commission, do hereby proclaim the 5th day of May 2021 as Junior FAR Chamber Champions Day. And witness whereof I have unto, I have unto set my hand and cause the seal of the City of FAR to be affixed on the 3rd day of May 2021, City of FAR, Ambrosio Hernandez, Mayor, Hilda Pedraza, City Clerk.
So first, we're gonna have Deandra Casares say a few words.
I would first like to start by thanking you all for the recognition. I know all of us students really appreciate it. This was really a learning experience. I got to understand more social media, got to talk to a lot of very interesting and nice people in our city. I've lived here since I was born, so giving back to my community, you know, it's really an honor just to be able to work. And I really think our school, the Chamber of Commerce, the City of FAR, just for the opportunity to get into work with y'all. Thank you.
And now we're gonna have Katia Morales.
Hi, oh, excuse me. Hi, my name is Katia Morales and I worked on this project. First of all, again, I wanted to thank you guys for allowing us to be here, speaking for the City of FAR. And I just wanted to say a little bit of what we did on the work was, it was a little project that we wanted to help the businesses that were struggling with the whole coronavirus and the pandemic, that everything started to feel like everything was going down. And we just wanted to help the companies that were struggling, to help them promote them through a very popular platform that is going on, just called TikTok, and you guys have heard of it. And we wanted to not only make the project seem, oh, it's just fun, we wanted to help them, the businesses, by making a, a very eye-catching TikTok. So people all around the world could see all these little businesses or big businesses that are struggling and come to visit them and help them out. Thank you.
Thank you.
And then last but not least, we're gonna have Mr. Diego Rebollo.
Is it okay if I use a little paper that I got?
It's always good to be prepared.
So, as everybody else, I would like to get started by thank y'all, thanking y'all to give us the opportunity to be here. My name is Diego Rebollo and I'm a ninth grade student in Southwest Early College High School. I'm also a junior ambassador in the Greater FAR Chamber of Commerce. I am very grateful for having this opportunity as a younger student because I consider this a wonderful chance for learning about the relationship between our local businesses and also encouraging our students to create a better community. I would love to continue participating in this program that I consider a very positive experience. I hope this is just the beginning to a very successful and greater future to the City of FAR.
On behalf of the city, I want to thank you all for participating in this. It's truly important, you all are young students. Hopefully someday you'll, you'll learn. There's obviously real, real-life experiences are always gonna help you later on in life. The chamber is huge. It's huge, what it does for the city here and what we're trying to evolve it into. And it's great that you are gonna be part of this because you're gonna be part of something great. So your names are gonna be put on plaques or whatever we have around here that's gonna be because it's important. And especially at your age, you're starting, you're just starting to see what it's about. So this is gonna be, be things that you're gonna, is it marketing that you're gonna want to get into, business? I mean, it's, it's wide open for you. So congratulations and thank you very much. Part of myself and the commission for participating in this, in this program. Seems fantastic. Want to thank our volunteers also for mentoring a lot of them, being out there, because it is very important. A lot of these people are successful businessmen and you will be able to learn from them. Anybody? Thank you all very much. Come on up for a picture. Uh, yes, thank you. Congratulations, guys and gals. Uh, we got one more we want to bring up. Drama kids, come on up, please. Come on up to the front. It's not scheduled, but we're gonna go impromptu. Make sure the floaters.
Mayor, do you want to say something?
No, no, go.
Come on up, your drama kids, don't be shy.
Nah, I don't think they're shy.
None of them are shy.
Teachers, right? Where are the teachers?
Drama coaches are there. Mr. Taylor also and Mr. Marquez.
Okay, come here, Mr. Lotus.
Okay, just want to welcome you and thank you for being here. The City of FAR would like to recognize the hard work, the time, the dedication that you all have put forth. You all are what? I'm sorry, I didn't hear. State what?
Champions.
And actually, I'd like to ask one of your directors to come up and say a few words. Just kind of tell us a little about your accomplishments and the process it took to, to get to where you are.
Hi, good afternoon. My name is Sergio Salzada. I am one of three drama teachers at PSG Southwest Early College High School. So just a little bit about the contest. The contest is over 50 years old in the state of Texas. And it's a, it's a contest where each school in the state of Texas presents a play. And, you know, there's over 1,500 shows in the state of Texas. And in 5A, which is what we competed in, we were crowned state champions in the entire state. So we are very proud of that endeavor. We are very proud of those accomplishments. And if you, if you know what PSG Southwest is all about, we were built in 2010. And these kids know the story, but the backstory, but I like to tell it. When we first opened, I had two students audition for the first show. And I started going through my classes and I said, okay, have you been in a play before? Have you been in a play? They said, no. Okay, well, you're gonna be in one or else you're not gonna pass the class. So we went ahead and, and performed our first show ever. We got first in the freshman one act, so that's where it actually started. And so we are very proud of the accomplishments that we've done today because you can go as a director a lifetime without making the state contest. And we were lucky enough to make it two years ago. We should have made it last year, but we were shut down. And this year, we were very, very honored and humbled to win state. And it's, it's a tremendous accomplishment. Some directors and students don't ever get a chance to make it to that state stage. And we've been there twice. So we are very, very honored that you are supporting us and the future of our community here. And we couldn't have done it without the support of you, the mayor, council commissioners, and of course, our administration, who continue to give us the, the resources that we need in order to make our, our great community and the City of FAR known throughout the state of Texas. We are very, very proud of the kids and we offer just tremendous honor from you. And we'd like to really thank you from the bottom of our hearts because without you guys, this wouldn't have been possible, without your support. And without the support of our fine arts director, Mr. John Taylor as well. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Are any, are any of your parents here?
Yes.
Who's here? Oh, you guys want to come up?
You're also a parent, you can raise your hand.
Well, I just want to say thank you to everyone, actually, you know, for everything they do for these children. I know that they are the future. And I know that my son is like so in love with drama. And I thank the directors because they have the patience, the love, and everything that they do to help all of them. So thank you.
There's so many good-looking people here. Which is your son? Okay, congratulations.
Thank you.
Yes.
Usually not shy on words, but I'm really humbled at the direction that the administration has given the directors, the direction that the directors have given the kids, but more importantly, the freedom to express and experiment in and within their characters, to develop, not just as students, but as artists. And I want to thank the directors for giving them that direction, but then that space to explore. Without that, we may have had a different result, but we don't have to worry about that because we're champs. Congratulations. Congratulations to each and one, each one of you. As a father of two of you and a surrogate father to the rest of you, I know how much hard work you put into it and I know how seriously you take it and your efforts definitely paid off this last weekend. So again, congratulations.
Mr. Marquez Taylor, right? Mr. Taylor and the gentleman who was just, where, where'd he go? Oh, there he is. Can you guys come up to, to the mic, the three of you?
Oh, yes, yes, yes. Mr. Taylor?
Thank, I just want to say thank you for everything you do. The arts always get left behind typically because there's a big push for either the STEM or, you know, athletics and that's fine, all is important. But the arts are really important and I'm glad that you guys have taken the, the time to focus on that. You can look at the results that have happened, but we also need to have balance in our lives and it's important that, Mr. Marquez, that your campus keep doing this. FAR will always be here to help you guys as, as family because that's what you guys are. And I just want to thank you personally for pushing this endeavor forward and congratulations for your great leadership. Thank you.
I'd like to, I know it's a lot of hard work what you all do because I've had children that were involved in drama and it's probably even more than any athletic sport that you all have to do. You're up there late, you're there till 10, 11, 12 o'clock at night. Teachers, instructors, directors, the administration, it's a lot of work. And most of all, what I've always, what I've noticed in the past, that, that you, most of the, the despians have great, great grades. They go on beyond their studies and it's rigorous what you all do. So that's where I, most of all, I'd like to take my hat off to you all because you all are great students. Now you're great despians. Congratulations and champions.
Mayor, I had, I had one question for, for the, for the champions. How many of you we gonna see in the future in TV?
There you go.
Yes, Mr. Lucas.
If I could just add one more thing, Mayor, because we have to give all the accolades that are due. And I want to point out that in the 100-plus history of FAR San Juan Alamo, this is the first state title for the entire district in UIL one act lane.
Are you guys getting a certificate or a trophy or something? Is that right?
They're, they're mailing it out.
Well, let us know, that way we can, I know we were at DDC once, right, and we talked about this. But once you have that, we'd like to take you guys out for dinner. So let me know when you, when you have it in, in your possession.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay?
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you, guys. You, you could, would you stand up here so facing that with, take a photo of, of the group?
Hey, guys, all, for all the drama kids, there's some cake, cupcakes back there for y'all, so enjoy.
I thought it was for us.
No. Congratulations. Moving on, thank you, Mayor Commissioners. Item number three, public testimony. Hilda, anybody sign up? No? Item number four, public hearings. Anybody sign up? No? Thank you, ma'am. Item number five, city manager's reports. Uh, yes, Mayor Commissioners, I got two reports for you. One, city engineer's reports is in the packet. If y'all have specific questions on projects, Omar's in the audience, but all projects are pretty much on time. We did have a CIP meeting this morning. There's some that are a little bit backed up, but that was because of the cold weather and some other things that, that backed them up. But for the most part, everything's on time. Questions? Alrighty, the other thing I have, Mayor Commissioners, we've been talking Alrighty, the other thing I have, Mayor Commissioners, we've been talking for a while, and we want to be transparent with everybody. We've been talking for a while about shutting down the event center. And to, to follow with the history-making PSJA, what they just did right now make history. The City of FAR is always making history. There's another thing coming up, the EMS. So our first EMS headquarters is gonna be at the FAR Event Center. We're gonna transition that from the FAR Event Center to EMS headquarters. Uh, we are gonna house EMS there, it'll be a, a station. We're also gonna house the helicopter, build helicopter bay and a landing pad out there. So we were toying with the idea of buying new property for it, but I think it's timely and it's a better use of city resources to use the existing building we have and transfer that to EMS. We were gonna go ahead and, and we were gonna tear down the event center and re-erect it somewhere else for parks. I know I had told you all that before. Since we're gonna use it for EMS, we did an alternative. We have, since we moved everybody from Parks, from four thirteen East Clark to the new Parks Building. The Parks, the old Parks Building is abandoned. I had said you'll check it out today, you said it's good for all you guys, four thirteen? So we're gonna do some minor remodels, move everybody over there, so we don't have to build a new building. Right now, media is there, and we're gonna relocate media to the old Chamber Building, which where Development Services was at. That's a better building there, it's got room enough for, uh, we can get a full-fledged true studio in there to do interviews and stuff like that, so I think that'll work, that'll work perfectly for us.
Good, and just for the clarification for the public, there's a little bit of misinformation about the EMS. Number one, EMS has never been and will never be free. You always, everybody gets charged, whether they pick you up or not. They charge your insurance, your Medicare, what have you, or they just charge you directly. But it's never been free, and I, I don't see a day where it will be free. Second of all, you know, our business plan model is for the City of FAR, and we know that it is absolutely a viable model for us. And Care's money was used to purchase the assets, and we're very proud of that design. And if there's other municipalities and or county areas that would like to have a coverage, they, they can. They just have, they have to have a formal contract with the City of FAR, and known as interlocals, which again is not a cash withdrawing endeavor, it's actually gains cash for the City of FAR. So just to point some clarification, because I had run into somebody for the weekend, and they were just a little misinformed about it, and, you know, there's a lot of misinformation. But we'll clarify it, and I'll probably do an article on it again to make sure and send out information to all households, so people can understand it better.
Yes, sir, Mayor, very correct, thank you. Now, any questions for me, guys, ladies? All right, thank you. Item number six, consent agenda, all items are routine and uncontroversial and can be enacted. What motion should you so choose?
Okay.
Motion to roll, second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes, thank you.
Thank you. Number seven, eight, consideration action if any on resolution authorizing publication of notice of intent to issue certificates of obligation, series two thousand twenty-one, for design, acquisition, construction, and improvement of certain public works and authorizing certain other matters relating thereto. Yes, Mayor Commissioners, a few weeks ago, you authorized us to go out for funding for the bridge. This is the resolution to start off that process. It does require roll call vote, so Hilda will be calling.
All right, do you have a motion for approval? Oh, sorry.
Yeah, we can call the, the vote.
Person, person, second, you're right, you're right, go ahead.
Mayor Ambrosio Hernández?
Here.
Yeah, yes.
Yes.
Commissioner Lazar Juajardo?
Yes.
Commissioner Bobby Carrillo?
Yes.
Commissioner Ramiro Caballero?
Yes.
Commissioner Daniel Chávez?
Yes.
Commissioner Ricardo Medina?
Yes.
And Commissioner Rita Flores?
Yes.
Thank you.
You need to get the first and second, right? Record it? You missed it?
I meant the motion.
Second. Okay.
Okay, any discussion? No, we already voted on it, right? So it's done. All right?
Sure.
Next item?
Seven B, consideration action if any on resolution authorizing the City of FAR to create a municipal court security committee pursuant to the Texas Government Code, section twenty-nine point zero-one-four, authorize establishment of policies and procedures for the purpose of enhancing FAR Municipal Court's safety and judges, for judges, staff, and the public. Yes, sir, this will be a five-to-six member committee, because the judge is one, City of FAR staffers is another, PD represented also. Uh, it's gonna give us recommendations as far as court security, whether they need metal detectors, bulletproof glass, stuff like that, and set out policies for it. Everything's been approved and reviewed by City Legal also. So move.
Taken.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes, thank you.
Thank you. Eight A, consideration action if any on amending the professional engineering rotation list for traffic, traffic engineer projects. Yes, sir, we want to amend the list to add two companies to have a more diverse list to choose from. One is WK Engineering, is a new firm we want to add to the list. And the other one, Land Tech, is currently on the list, but they've been bought out by KCI. So we want to amend the list to include KCI Engineering on there also. So move.
Taken.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes, thank you.
Thank you. Eight B, consideration action if any on acceptance of the City of FAR Monument Sign Project and release of final balance with retainage in the amount of six thousand eight hundred sixty-five dollars and seventy-five cents. Yes, sir, this is the sign directly in front of Topgolf off the Frontage Road. Uh, it's substantially complete, we're just adding some lighting and some landscaping around it, and we'll have a ribbon cutting for it.
Move for approval.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes. Hey, where are we on, on the one for Halavina? Halavina Drive.
Yes, sir, those, uh, we, we got the final plans, uh, like last week, and so we should be advertising this month to go out for bids. So we're just going through all the contracts, making sure all the language is in accordance with our legal and standards, and we'll be bidding it out this month.
Okay, and it'll be done when?
Probably, the contract's probably gonna be ninety to a hundred and twenty days.
It'll be done?
Yes. Ninety days. We'll put ninety days in the contract.
Because we'd like to see it up before the kids come back.
Yeah, definitely.
Okay. Thank you. Go ahead.
Order and approval, okay, yes, sir.
Yeah, we do.
Nine A, consideration action if any, authorizing city manager to negotiate desktop correction to purchase desktop and laptop computers from CDWG in the amount of fifty-three thousand three hundred eighty-eight dollars and seventy cents, used license in Texas DIR contract, TSO four-one-five-nine. Yes, sir, this is, these are computers and mobile data terminals for EMS. Staff's recommend approval.
Okay. No, for approval.
Taken.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes, thank you.
Thank you. Nine B, consideration action if any, authorizing city manager to purchase twenty Motorola, mobile Motorola radios and twenty portable Motorola radios in the amount of a hundred ninety-one thousand seven hundred sixty-three dollars and sixty cents from Motorola Solutions through H-GAC contract number RA zero-five dash one-eight. Yes, sir, this is also radios for the truck, for the ambulances, and one for the medic, for each unit, for, for EMS coverage.
Okay.
Move to approve. Taken.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes, thank you.
Thank you. Ten A, consideration action if any on amendment to lease agreement with Fuerta Duty-Free Americas. Yes, sir, this is an extension of the current contract, and the rent went up to what, Luis?
Rent went up from. Rent went up from ten thousand dollars a month to twelve thousand seven hundred dollars a month. So it's a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year.
Move for approval.
Staff's recommend approval.
Taken.
Who are we leasing?
Luis.
The government, or what?
No.
Private corporation.
Tax-free.
Duty-free. Duty-free Americas.
Oh, okay.
They've been there for the past ten years.
All right. Any further discussion, although it's all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes, thank you.
Yes, sir. Ten B, consideration action if any on authorizing city manager to negotiate and enter into any lease under contracts with the University of Texas system. Yes, sir, there's a couple of projects coming online that we want to get a jump on, so staff's recommend approval.
Move to approve. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes, thank you.
Thank you. Ten C, consideration action if any, authorizing city manager to negotiate and enter into a contract for medical billing services for the City of FAR. Yes, Mayor Commissioners, we had a second billing service company Zoom call meeting last week. We invited Commissioner Caballero, because he have, has extensive experience in there. Uh, staff is recommending Quick Med Claims as our billing company of choice. Their fees will be paid out of the fees they collect, six point five for ground and two point five for air. Staff's recommend approval.
Move to approve. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes, thank you.
That's all I have, Mayor.
Great.
I'm adjourned.
Taken.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? It passes, we are adjourned at four forty-three. Thank you, everybody.